I'd like to start this Board of Alderman meeting with a public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item we have is a site plan approval request for the Oak Street duplex, SP 90, to be located at 302 East Oak Street. I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, my planning and zoning report, and the public hearing notice. On February 23rd, 2015, a request was filed for a site plan approval for the Oak Street duplex to be located at 302 East Oak Street. Property is owned C2 General Commercial. Per Appendix A, residential household living duplex, a conditional use permit is required. This site plan approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with a conditional use permit, CUP 42 approval request as required per Section 405.340(c)(8). The motion for approval passed eight to zero with two absent at the April 2nd, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and there was no conditions. I'd also like to add that earlier this afternoon, a gentleman stopped by who is a neighbor of this proposed project and asked that, stated that he could not make the meeting tonight, but asked if he could express his support for the project, and I printed out his email that he sent me, and it's in your packets.
Should we read the email since it's all over?
Yes. Here it is.
What? There you go.
It was sent from Mr. Chris Kolkmeier. Received it at 3:08 PM today. Said, "Good afternoon, Jack, for our conversation earlier today, 5:515. I own and live in the duplex directly across the street from the property at 302 East Oak Street, at 301 and 303 East Oak Street. I would like to express my complete approval of the said changes desired by the owner for the said property. His prior rehabs that I am aware of look to be top quality and an improvement to the neighborhood. The said property has been somewhat dangerous, I swore, for at least the past two years that I have lived here. Please express my support of this rehab project resulting in a finished duplex to the Board. Thank you. Chrissy Kolkmeier, 301 East Oak Street, Warrenton, Missouri."
It's nice to get positive feedback.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, that being said, I'd like to open the Board of Alderman meeting for May 5th, 2015.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Do you have a conditional use hearing? Sorry. My error. We see eight forty-five.
Nick Haas is here too, if he wants to speak on behalf of it.
Anybody like to speak on behalf of it?
Sure.
Let me shuffle five minutes if you would, please, and come forward.
Hi, I'm Nick Haas, contractor for the project over there at 302 East Oak. We've done a few other apartment projects and stuff of this nature around town, and just thought that this property be a good candidate for duplex, you know, considering what's around it, pretty heavily multifamily area, and we're just kind of looking forward to revamping that corner there and just really making it a nice place and attracting good quality renters. That's about all I have to say.
I appreciate it.
Are there any questions, or is that later, possibly?
I don't. No, I'm sorry. But thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Or have anything to say about the, all right?
Next item I have is the conditional use permit approval request for the Oak Street duplex, CUP 42, to be located at 302 East Oak Street. On February 23rd, 2015, a request was filed for a conditional use permit approval for the Oak Street duplex to be located at 302 East Oak Street. Property is owned C2 General Commercial. Per Appendix A, residential household living duplex, a conditional use permit is required. This conditional use permit approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with the site plan, SP 90 approval request as required per Section 405.340(c)(8). The motion for approval passed eight to zero with two absent at the April 2nd, 2015 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, with no additional conditions, and I'd like to make part of the public hearing record the municipal code by reference, my plan zoning report, and the public hearing notices.
There goes an item where you'd like to speak on behalf of that one. Saying no, I would like to open the Board of Alderman meeting for May 5th, 2015 at this time. Alderman Delloy, if you'd like to start us off in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next item on the agenda would be approval of the regular Board minute meetings for April 21st, 2015. Can I get a motion to approve the?
I'll make the motion that we approve the regular Board minute, meeting minutes from April 21st, 2015.
Second. The approval from, a motion made by Alderperson Cassily and seconded by Alderman Ock. Roll call both, please.
Alderman Dryer.
Epstein, I wasn't here.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Passes four to zero with one abstain, or absence. Sorry.
We'll get you broken in another month.
All right, second, second item on the agenda would be the work session, approval for the work session minutes of April 30th, 2015.
I make the motion that we approve the work session meeting minutes from April 30th, 2015.
Second.
The motion made by Alderperson Holly and seconded by Alderman Delloy.
I have a quick comment.
Sure.
Part of that meeting was to have people participate in a monkey survey. Survey Monkey. I guess if you pinch buttons, you're more of a monkey than a survey. And so that's currently going on, correct?
Yes.
So people, if they're interested in, what we're trying to do is work on branding in that part of the meeting, and we came up with four potential new slogans, I guess, for the city currently work for the city of all seasons. We thought we need to look at changing that, so if you go out to the city website, there's a link to Survey Monkey, and you can participate in that and put your two cents in, and we'd appreciate you doing that. Do we have any idea how many people respond to that yet, or?
We won't know until the end.
Okay, so take advantage of that opportunity.
I did.
I did, too.
I did, too.
And we all voted against each other.
With that being said, if I can get a roll call vote on that, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Epstein, I wasn't here.
Motion passes four, four approvals with one abstain. One person abstained, one Alderperson abstained. Sorry about that. With that being said, I'd like to open up to hearing from the public. We just ask that you keep your comments to five minutes, but please come forward and bring up any issues you may want to as a public. All right, with that being, it is, I'd also like to call for the next item on the agenda being the appointment of a Ward Two Board of Alderman. The Alderman spot I'd like to, or the person I'd like to present for the Alderman spot would be Damian Frederick, so if I can get a, a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Damian Frederick to fill the vacancy of Ward Two Board of Alderman spot.
I would like to note that this was something that we have discussed, and there was various people that were approached and vetted to see if other people were interested, and Damian has showed the interest into filling the role for one year, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'll make the appointment of Damian Frederick for the appointment of Ward Two Alderperson for the year of, what, 2015 to 16?
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Cassily, segmented by Alderperson Holly. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
No.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. If you'd like to state reasons, you can. If not, it's either your choice.
I don't know the guy.
Okay.
Well, we are.
Understood, thank you. Next, next item on the agenda would be the Board of Alderman comments.
Can you just start?
Sure. I had the opportunity this week to spend some time walking through the different parks and the cemetery, nice little tour for my dog and I, since we don't have a park or just us. But I did want to note to the public that now is actually the time that, in all seriousness, we need to go and clean up any of the flowers and stuff around the grave sites. If you have relatives out at the cemetery, it's getting difficult for our staff to mow around all the stones and all the stuff that's been put out, and in about three weeks, we will be seeing a lot of visitors to our cemetery over Memorial Day weekend, and it'd be nice if things were picked up, so if you could make a trip out there, that would be very good.
Good when you get your dog.
It worked, didn't it?
Yeah, it worked.
That was pretty impulsive.
I was surprised.
Anyone else?
Nothing?
Nothing.
No?
Nope.
Right.
All right. And some general, mayor's comments. I'll try and keep this brief. I would like to address everyone and let you guys know about a certain bill that has come about on the Senate floor. It's SB 540, or Senate Bill 540, which started out, I believe, as a pretty progressive and easy bill that would be okay to swallow. Started with a 1.5 cent sales tax increase, but it was amended on the board, on the floor, which a lot of people may not follow, but I think it's very pertinent to our area, and we need to address the public and let the public know to call, contact their senator about it, or senators about it. The issue is, is that it was raised to a 3.5 cent increase on the diesel, which in itself is not a huge thing, but there was a add-on to adding a committee to be formed by the governor to assess the toll road situation. I will say in my personal opinion, killing two things here, if you're asking for a fuel increase as well as possible toll road, the toll road situation would really hurt our town, and I believe that needs to be addressed. We've showed support in it in the past for the Board about the toll road situation, but I think it would be very detrimental to our town as far as growth, as far as businesses, if that did go through. So I think it needs to be put out there in the public. I don't think it's being widely talked about. I don't think the media's grabbing, media's grabbing a hold of it, but I think it is something we need to be concerned about for our community and what our future may hold with that, because it will hinder a lot of things, and there was wording set in it to where it will greatly affect us, because it looks like it'll start right around Forest Hill area or Wentzville area, and continue on to the Kansas City area. So I do feel people need to be educated on it and address it, and I greatly encourage you to look up who your senators are. We have them on our website. It is available on the website of the numbers for our senator. Contact them and give your opinion. I think it's widely needed right now, especially when we have two weeks left in the work session for them. So, with that being said, it's, I just greatly, greatly, greatly encourage people to just look that up and see what it's about, so. Next item on the agenda would be turning it over to Terry Thorne.
Thank you, Mayor.
Director of Operations and Finance Officer.
My first item this evening is the dental insurance renewal. At the last meeting, you all reviewed a renewal from Delta Dental, a proposal, and thank you, Alderman Ock, for letting us know that there are other provider options in our area, because as a result of that, J.W. Terrell got proposals from both Aetna and Anthem with providers in our area, and both of those proposals actually would be lower than the renewal quote that we received from Delta Dental. In looking at it, the proposal that Aetna provided has some increased benefits over what we currently are seeing. The annual maximum is $1,500 compared to the current maximum of the Delta Dental plan of $1,250. Ortho for them, and the maximum on it, on the current plan and the Anthem plan are $1,250, while the Aetna plan is $1,500. So there's increases, small, but still increases in benefits over what our current plan is. And maybe more importantly, for employees, right now we have a two-tier rate, so it's either employee only or family. Many of our employees would be employee and spouse or employee and children, coverage if it were available, which obviously saves them a little bit of money overpaying for a full family plan. So with the Aetna plan, it offers all four levels and different options for coverage depending on what your family situation is. The rate for the Aetna plan would be a decrease from the current Delta Dental plan of 5% over what our renewal option was. Terrell is recommending the Aetna as the best option because of the, both decrease over what our current plan cost is, but also the increased benefits and the other tier options for coverages. So if you choose to approve the Aetna plan, we need to rescind the vote from the previous meeting to renew the Delta and accept the proposal from Aetna for the dental insurance for employees.
Okay. Well, I entertain a motion to rescind the previous motion on April 12th, I'm sorry, correction, April 21st, 2015, to approve the Delta Dental renewal quote.
I'd like to thank Gary for.
Absolutely.
Suggesting that, because this is not an insurance coverage that I have any expertise in, so.
Now, my experience, we bid this out every year, and if you tend to stay with the same dental provider, they tend to just automatically keep renewing and renewing, and they're not terribly responsive to the market, and that's been our experience, so when, you know, we stay with somebody for a certain time period, and then the market changes, you have an opportunity, and this is an employee savings, because the employees pay for this.
Absolutely.
And the big thing, I think, that Terry talked about is, right now, if it's a husband and wife, they're paying $104.45 a month, but under the new plan, the husband and wife pays $59.68, so that's a significant savings, easily helping you deal with the maximum differences, so I'd even say it's good that the employees get more option.
Absolutely, and we do thank you for pointing that out.
I'll make the motion that we rescind the approval, approval from April 21st, 2015, approving the Delta Dental quote for the upcoming dental coverage.
Second.
Motion is made by Alderperson Cassily and segmented by Alderman Ock. Can you get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. So the next one would be to entertain, make, or entertain a motion to approve the Aetna Dental option. I hope I say this right, ValOpt, 12A for dental insurance renewal. All right, thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the option to go with Aetna for dental coverage.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, segmented by Alderperson Holly. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
My next item for you this evening is the results of a tourism commission meeting that was held on April 28th, 2015. They reviewed three requests for funding and recommended approval of all three of those. The farmer's market requested approval for $576, which was for advertising pieces that included newspaper ads, banners, yard signs, and brochures for the upcoming market season. That was a budgeted item. The city of Warrenton requested $2,000, which is the budgeted amount, for the citywide yard sale to be, to be held July 25th, 2015. This is the cost for advertising and to provide the little listings and maps that are given out, both online and in the lobby, a couple days before. There's a lot of people interested in having those listings, so this is just the production costs and advertising. And then the Warren County Fine Arts Council requested $283.50. These are for those what might call tear pads. They're the small sheets that you find, like, on top of your pizza box or on the counter at certain places, basically advertising what the upcoming concert in the park event is. And so they recommended approval of that as well, and it also was a budgeted item. Total of approved items was $2,959.50.
Well, we're talking about promotions. A while back, you discussed with us possibly the city having the calendar for the Chamber site.
Uh huh.
Is that in process? Has that occurred?
It is currently out there and available, just as it was with the Chamber. Right now Jessica is actually taking care of managing that site. People are still able to go out and put those events on that site, just as they were before when the Chamber had it. We have not advertised it anywhere at this point. It needs an upgrade so that Jessica can actually change the front page, which still talks about it being the Chamber running that part of the website, so it needs a little bit of upgrade, and hopefully we'll get that done in the near future and be able to put it out there and advertise it, maybe put a link on our page. But it is still active, it's still out there and available, but before we can really launch it, it really needs to have the ability for her to manage that. Right now, what my understanding is, that you can go out and put your event out there, and her only ability is to be able to either, yes, approve it to go on just as you put it, or disprove it. There's really no ability to manage the page at all. Everything has to go to the website host, and then we have to pay for each item that's changed by the website host, so we want to get that fixed so that Jessica can actually go in and manage the page. So it's still there and available, and we hope to have it upgraded soon and really be able to kind of relaunch that.
So I know in the summer, there's a lot of churches that have Cajun Bible schools and different activities. If they wanted to put that on, would they contact Jessica?
It's still out there.
Or could they do it themselves, or how?
They do it themselves. Everything is posted, it's warrentonevents.com, and they simply can go out there and put their events on, and then all she does is pushes a button for a link to, to set that up on there, so. And there are a lot of churches currently on the page.
Right.
So it's still available in there.
Did you need a motion approval for the tourist recommendations?
Yes, please.
Are there any other comments or questions for Terry before we do that? All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the tourism commission recommendations in the amount of $2,959.50. A vote?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, segmented by Alderman Dryer. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
My next item is just a summary of the spring cleanup, and I think Brad has a typo on his numbers here. We had 179 tickets that were handed out as people came through. Not everyone took a ticket, so the numbers would have been somewhat higher than 179. I think it's 8,240.
Those are the tickets for?
Drawing.
Drawing.
For the drawing, yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have 179 tickets?
No, no, tickets for the drawing that was held here last meeting.
Yeah, I got it, too.
8,240 pounds of metal was brought to be recycled, 31 pallets of electronics were recycled, and 255 tires were recycled that day. So it was a pretty impressive amount of goods that were brought here and dropped off to be recycled, so the event was a success, I believe.
I agree.
And we hope it continues to grow. That would be our hope. My next item for you is a request for approval of an updated uniform policy. Some months back, at the time that we had our strategic planning meeting, we talked about an upgrade to the employee uniforms. For many years, there has been discussion among employees of those departments that are actually out in the elements, particularly in wintertime, about desiring to have some type of jacket or coat that's provided by the city as part of uniforms, because they were wearing their own coats and outerwear, and those become ruined in the course of a lot of those positions. So we talked to some employees and realized that every year we were giving them uniform shirts and pants, and that some of them had stacks in their closet that had never been used from prior years. So we took a look at that, realized that maybe there is a better way to do it, and as a result, came up with this policy, which will still cost the city the same, about $200 per employee is what we typically have spent annually, but rather than giving them more shirts and pants that sit in the corner of the closet never to be used, allowing them to purchase other types of uniform equipment that would all be consistent among the departments. So things like winter jackets, things like hats and polo shirts and those sorts of sweatshirts that they could wear so that everyone looks the same in those departments. So what this policy does is puts that in place. We'll have to determine how we want to handle this first year, if in fact, we have a change in our city logo, because then those that are stored in the corner of the closet really do not match anymore, so we can make that decision at a future date. But this puts that uniform policy that we previously had discussed in writing and puts it in place. While we were looking at this, we had Chief Hottishell look at the police portion of the uniform policy, and he has upgraded that to reflect what we were actually doing. So the policy that we had in writing did not accurately reflect the practice that was in place, and this now reflects that practice. So we're asking for your approval of the updated uniform policy.
Make a motion that we approve the uniform policies, policy as updated.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, segmented by Alderperson Cassily, or Holly, my apologies. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holly?
Yes.
Alderperson Cassily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Dryer?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Then I have a couple of updates for you. Don't forget, this is Local Government Week. Today, we had cookies and lollipops out in the Chamber, I mean, out in the lobby, and apparently that was very well received, because Melody originally thought she was going to have a ton of cookies left for you all to eat this evening, and that simply did not happen. This afternoon, we had a lot of customers who were in, and the cookies evaporated, so.
Guy was here.
It was successful.
[laughing].
He had to defend himself.
On Friday, remember, we have an employee lunch down at the grounds and maintenance building, so any of you who can attend, we certainly would welcome you and invite you to attend that at lunchtime on Friday.
Starts 11:30?
Melody, do you remember? Yes, 11:30. I believe we're having burgers and brats is on the menu.
Yes.
Also, to let you know that we have a professional pool manager who will be managing our municipal pool over this upcoming season. We had asked Midwest Pool Management to attempt to find some experienced managers who brought, hopefully, a new level of management to the pool, and that our customers would see that in the service that they. see that in the service that they receive there. They were able to find a couple of individuals who will share that pool management role, who have some long-time pool management experience. So I'm hoping that we will really see a change in how our customers are seeing our pool run this year. So I think that's a real plus for us, to be able to offer that to our customers over there. Before we know it, the pool will be opening at the end of this month. It hardly seems possible, but it's coming very quickly. Also, a question for you in regard to a bench downtown. We've had one of the local businesses downtown who desires to put a bench in front of their business, have spoken with the department head staff who would be involved, from Jack to Guy, to make sure that it wouldn't somehow interfere or wouldn't be in the problem as far as walkway and pedestrian traffic, and they don't see an issue as long as the placement is such that it doesn't impede the flow there and that the bench be of the same kind that's already there. So my question for you is if you all have a problem or if you want to have them come and request to you, how do you want to handle the request for a business downtown to place a bench in front of their business?
A permanently installed bench?
Yes.
It is not?
It would be a permanently installed bench to match the ones that are currently there.
Does it have advertising on?
No, it would have to be like what is currently there.
Because there are still a few benches around town from years where there was advertising put on. I don't know how many exist, but I know there's at least one of them up by Clovers there. I don't have any problem if the, personally, if the, if somebody goes shopping with my wife a lot, I like to sit on the bench as she shops, so I'm always seeking out benches. So I don't have any issue with it as long as it doesn't obstruct traffic or the walk flow, and if, in the judgment of somebody on staff that's not doing that, I don't think it needs to come before the council from my perspective.
I agree with you.
You agree that you like to sit on the bench when your husband shops?
My husband likes to have... No, as long as it meets their requirement, I don't think it's necessary to come before their work.
Okay, great. We will let them know. Thank you. And that's really all I have this evening.
All right. Next on the agenda is Michelle Slinter with the Economic Development Director.
Good evening. First thing I have for you tonight is my economic development update.
There's going to be people disappointed that Cracker Barrel decided they didn't want to come out here.
They're going to keep evaluating, so hopefully in the future.
Did they already have to banquet for the development group?
I'm sorry? No, that is this weekend.
That's this weekend, okay. Well, it looks like more activity than we've seen for a while, more interest, so that's good.
There's no comments or questions, I'll move on. The next item on the agenda I have is to request to apply for the bulletproof vest program. We're going to apply for three vests for the police department, and it's a 50% grant.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve to apply for the bulletproof grant, bulletproof vest.
Sub moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Hawley, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. If we can, do you have a roll call vote, please?
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And the last item I have for you tonight is to request approval for out-of-state travel for RECON, which is International Council of Shopping Centers in Las Vegas. This is a budgeted item.
Any questions?
Yeah. I was going to say, I hope you don't have reservations after Riviera since it closed yesterday.
But this is the conference of retailers where...
Yes, there's usually 30,000 to 40,000 retailers and individuals there, and you walk through and you meet with them and try to get developers and retailers and get them to your community and make contact with them.
We have the opportunity to set up meetings with various people before you go.
I've actually put in some requests to several of them to set up some meetings.
I'll make the motion to approve the out-of-state travel for Michelle to go to RECON.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Castily, seconded by Alderman Ock. If we can, please have a roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And that is all I have for you this evening.
When is that, Michelle?
That is May 16th through the 20th.
Oh, so if we said no, just kidding. Good luck, because that could be very productive.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda would be attorney general to Kathy Alford, finance manager.
Good evening. The first item I have is the accounts payable for the month. In addition to the regular invoices that we pay monthly, there are also engineering and a couple of different projects that we're paying for. So the amount that I am requesting is $565,833.33.
That was more than a $305, I should check.
I'm sorry, say that amount again, please. 33 cents? All right. Any questions?
So it's the engineering for, how did Hickory Lick, or what's the engineering?
The part of that is the Phase One sewer in addition to the Hickory Lick.
Okay.
All right, if there's no more comments or questions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable for in the amount of $565,833.33.
Sub moved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Hawley, seconded by Alderman Dreyer. If we can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
And the next item I have is the monthly report for the month of March.
I lost my stuff. No, I think...
Yeah, I reviewed this today and sent questions earlier, so those are answered sufficiently. I don't have any questions. Anyone else?
Great, that's all I have.
All right. Well, moving on, next on the agenda would be Jack Ant, zoning officer and building commissioner.
First item is the site plan approval request for the Oak Street duplex located 302 East Oak Street.
No questions? Yeah, I'm the representative to the P&amp;Z board on this, and I didn't write notes this time because it was a pretty straightforward application, and I think several of the committee members expressed surprise that they were taking on the project just because of the condition of the building, and I'm surprised and grateful. The only question that came up that really can't be addressed and is not appropriate for the project anyway would be, what is the plan for the exterior of the building? I think somebody mentioned that, and there's no requirement under the code, you know, for certain sightings or certain things, so that really wasn't an issue. But I think it was highly supported by the zoning board and very grateful that somebody's taken that eyesore project and turned it into something good for the community, so that's my comment.
You must make it pretty.
And Nick's here, and I believe it's his plan to remodel the interior and the exterior and do improvements to the yard. I mean, he can speak for himself, but I believe that's his plan.
Yeah. I know there was also some questions about the parking and...
Yes, which me and Guy met with him on site, and all that's worked out.
Yeah, we plan to completely remodel the inside and outside. Parking will be coming in off of the corner of Dryden there, and it'll be a nice park, you know, fairly good-sized parking lot for code. And the exterior will be new 30-year architectural shingles, vinyl siding, all-new vinyl windows. You know, some of them will have to be increased in size to be heat grass codes. A lot, a lot of work there, so...
It looks like it's a challenge. Appreciate you taking that.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be nice, though, to have it straightened up and then over over there.
Yeah, it'll be really nice if we can make that a nice-looking facility.
Absolutely appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda?
Next is the conditional use permit approval request for the Oak Street duplex located 302 East Oak, what we just were discussing the site plan on.
Yeah, and my perspective on the conditional use is, yeah, it's a commercial zone, but all the property surrounding it is already duplexes or apartments, so you're not imposing into an area, you know, residential when you someday dream it could be commercial. That's just, you know, it's one of those awkward situations in town where the zoning line runs down the middle of the road, so one side is commercial, the other side is residential, but the reality is it's residential on both sides there, so that's not an issue at all.
And Nick did, excuse me, I'm sorry, Karen. Nick did include in his packet, he included a map that showed all the existing multifamily in that immediate area, for your, for your record.
I was going to comment that I appreciate that Chris Coleman took the time to voice his opinion on this. It would have been very easy for him just to not say anything and let us go without that information, so I appreciate that.
Anything else, Chair?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll tag on to the last little bit of that, is I appreciate you coming down today and explaining everything and taking the time to do that. I also appreciate you investing yourself into one.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe that's why.
Next part of the agenda is Chief Craig Hattishell.
Thank you, sir. The only thing I have this evening is actually exciting news for me and the city as far as I'm concerned, and that is my nomination to be a delegate to the International Law Enforcement Torch Run Conference this year. Just some historical data, prior to my arrival here, the police department really only did fundraising for Special Olympics through t-shirt sales. Through some connections made actually by Kristi Becker Markovich, we started doing the torch run, and, you know, my passion for Special Olympics, which I always had going back to my early days, really, really kind of blossomed at that point, especially after I went to a regional meeting and we started looking at other ways to fundraise. And, you know, my goal ever since then has been just to do a little bit more every year. So, you know, we've added additional fundraising events every year. We just finished up our tip and cop event, which looks like we probably raised about $4,000 at that. And I kind of had a goal last year and didn't quite make it, but it looks like this year I'm actually going to have a corporate sponsor for our torch run event this year. So, you know, we have been adding on every year, and that passion has not gone unnoticed. And last Thursday, I received a phone call from Special Olympics Missouri Executives, and they said, hey, we have a scholarship available and we would really like you to go. So I'm humbled.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
And we would like you to wear your t-shirt that says the city of Warrenton.
Oh, no problem. Yeah, the green one that I got for the...
Yes, the recycled one. No, that is, it's definitely an honor, and it's great that you can represent.
I will definitely represent, and it's, it's a huge undertaking, but it's, it's a tremendous opportunity to network with people from all over the world that are doing the same things that we're doing, and, you know, hopefully bring some new, fresh ideas back and go from there. So...
Bring some, bring some fresh businesses with you.
What's the date of the torch run?
The torch run is May 27.
So it's after school?
After school, yeah, unfortunately. It's...
Because I know the kids enjoy coming out and watching.
I know, and I enjoy being able to do that. You know, I guess...
They just enjoy getting out of class for any reason, but...
Yeah, fortunately, unfortunately, there were no snow days this year, so school didn't go that late like it did last year, but anytime we have the opportunity, you know, we love to go through the school, so... And I guess as an adjunct to that, if I could get approval for the travel out of state that I'll need?
Nope.
Please?
Not unless you take all of us.
I make a motion that we approve Chief Hattishell going to the delegate, the OETR delegate.
International Law Enforcement Torch Run Conference.
Thank you, thank you.
And where is it?
It is in the Bahamas, paradise.
That's where I want to go.
When he said it was exciting, I thought, wow. Really appreciate your work. I mean, I'm a member of the handicap services board in town, and I know how Special Olympics is such a critical thing to both clients' lives, and I really appreciate your support of that.
It really is. Thank you.
Great job.
All right. Motion on the floor to, for Chief Hattishell to seek approval to accept the nomination to, of delegate to the International Law Enforcement Torch Run. Motion was made by Alderperson Hawley and seconded by Alderman Dreyer. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Chief.
We don't have internet connection anymore.
Nope. So you're lucky we approved that.
Yeah.
Got to start the wire.
I mean, the only issue left with the meeting is reading the bills, but I don't have it unless I, no one has it up here, so I don't know.
I don't have it.
Are you? I checked a while ago.
If only the lawyer has it, then we're in serious trouble.
No.
Or maybe he can stand up here and read the bill in its entirety.
I haven't.
I haven't.
Well, I've got it on my, I've got it here for, I'm on 18, too.
All right. Next on the agenda is, as we've already said, is the Bills of Ordinance. Entertain a motion for the first reading, Bill number 1215.
I'll call for the first reading of Bill number 1215.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Castily, seconded by Alderperson Hawley.
In ordinance, it's authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Oak Street duplex located at 302 East Oak Street.
Call for the second and final reading and passage of Bill number 12-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Hawley, seconded by Alderperson Castily.
The zoning ordinance is authorized under section 405.390 of the municipal code of the city of Warrenton, Missouri, approving a site plan for Oak Street duplex located at 302 East Oak Street.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, or Bill passes five to zero.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 13-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Castily, seconded by Alderman Dreyer for the first reading of Bill number 1315.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow the Oak Street duplex located at 302 East Oak Street.
Call for the second and final reading and passage of Bill number 13-15.
Second.
Motion made by Alderperson Hawley and seconded by Alderperson Castily for the second reading and passage of Bill number 13-15.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow the Oak Street duplex located at 302 East Oak Street.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Alderperson Castily?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Dreyer?
Yes.
Alderman Hawley?
Yes.
Bill motion passes by five to zero. Actually, before we do that, I just want to recognize that we didn't have someone from, I believe it's Boy Scouts, right in the back.
997.
Troop 997. You might stand it up just for a minute so we can kind of recognize you. I appreciate the...
Thank you, I appreciate them.
What's that? Two, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm right here, I didn't...
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, I appreciate you guys coming and being here and representing your various groups, so thank you.
The Tax Act is going towards...
I'm sorry, the what?
The Tax SB 450.
Oh, the 540?
Yeah, 540.
It's supposed to be the improvements through MoDOT that they weren't approved for the voting that they did this past year, so that is one of the things they're trying to do, is implement that. My feeling, like I said, just on my personal level, I just think it would really hurt our community to see a toll go in, and I just... our community to see a toll go in, and I just, I'm willing to put myself out there to try and do whatever I can to salvage that and not get that passed, so... I don't mind the tax increase on fuel. I know some people may disagree on me, but if we have to do something, I'd rather that. I don't think we need to do both.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll...
I'll make a motion that we adjourn and move into executive session.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Castily, seconded by Alderman Hawley to move to executive session.
For real estate.
For real estate, my apologies.
Sorry.
What's that?
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry, I didn't know we had to do the I or roll call.
Alderman Ock?